Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you please stand for a pledge to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For the record, this is a public meeting of the Bayonne Board of Education. It is 8:00 PM, the 25th day of February. We're convening in the Alexander O'Connor Auditorium. The presiding officer is Maria Villado, President of the Bayonne Board of Education. Those in attendance include Mr. John Neese, our Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Kenneth Kopaz, our Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, Dr. Gary Mader, Board Secretary, Mr. Dan Castles, our School Business Administrator, Mr. Thomas Figu, our Assistant School Business Administrator, Dr. Dennis Degnan, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, and Philip Lamparello, our Board Counsel. The meeting is open to the public. I will take a roll call. Trustee Alonso. Trustee Broderick is absent. Trustee Burke.
Present.
Trustee Cassius.
Here.
Trustee Egan.
Here.
Trustee Finerty.
Here.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Here.
Vice President Munoz.
Here.
President Villado.
Here. For the record, adequately written advance notice of at least 48 hours, given the time, date, and location of this meeting with the agenda was provided as follows. Notice was prominently posted in City Hall at 630 Avenue C on the bulletin board, reserved for such announcements of the Board of Education. The Board Secretary sent such notice to the Jersey Journal and Bayonne Community News. Notice was filed with the municipal clerk of the city of Bayonne, Ms. Madeline Medina. At this moment, we'd like to take a moment of silence for Ms. Gisette Siebelz, chemistry teacher at Bayonne High School, who recently passed away. She's the service. And for Edith Farrell, she was a school board trustee and a dear friend from 1991 to 1994. Moment of silence, please.
At this time, do I have a motion for a short recess?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Vice President Munoz, a second.
Second.
Second by President Villado on that motion, and second, Trustee Alonso.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick is absent, Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Cassius.
Yes.
Trustee Egan.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Yes.
Vice President Munoz.
Yes.
President Villado. It is 8:05, the board will be back shortly. At this time, at this time, I'd like to reconvene the public meeting. It is 8:31, I'd like to take a roll call. Trustee Alonso.
Present.
Trustee Broderick is absent, Trustee Burke.
Here.
Trustee Cassius.
Here.
Trustee Egan.
Here.
Trustee Finerty.
Here.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Here.
Vice President Munoz.
Here.
And President Villado.
Here.
Before we start our business tonight, we have two of our former trustees in the audience, and I'd like to ask them to come up. Trustee Cal Pruden and former trustee Charles Ryan. Could you please meet us on the left hand of the stage?
I'm here to the Board of Education. We would like to offer former trustee Pruden and former trustee Ryan a ring and a nice certificate commemorating their service to the Bayonne Board of Education and the community of Bayonne. Congratulations.
It escalates.
We don't have a stoop there, I can't help you today, I can't help you.
All right, folks, we will... I'd like to start with our agenda. Our first item is our approval of minutes and acceptance of communications. Do I have a motion? Motion by President Villado, second.
Second. Trustee Egan.
Second by Trustee Egan on a motion and a second on minutes and communications. Trustee Alonso.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick is absent, Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Cassius.
Yes.
Trustee Egan.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Yes.
Vice President Munoz.
Yes.
President Villado.
Yes.
Next up is our consent agenda, starting with curriculum. This would be Resolutions A1 through A28, but I do have a question. Mr. Monir Sinman, 2C Columbus Drive. What if the majority of the attendants attending here now rejects this curriculum? What will happen next? All right, so the board will take that question into consideration. So, Resolutions A1 through A28, do I have a motion?
I motion.
Motion by Trustee Finerty. And do I have a second?
I second.
Second by Trustee Wilbeck. On that motion and second, Trustee Alonso.
No.
Then you're voting no on the whole package?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. President Broderick is absent, Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Cassius.
Yes.
Trustee Egan.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Yes.
Vice President Munoz.
Yes.
President Villado.
Yes.
Next up is our Finance, Building, and Grounds Resolution, B1 through B9. Do I have a motion?
I'll move B1 through B9.
Motion by Trustee Egan, and do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Second by Vice President Munoz. On that motion and second, Trustee Alonso.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick is absent, Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Cassius.
Yes.
Trustee Egan.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Yes.
Vice President Munoz.
Yes.
President Villado.
Yes.
Next up is our Personnel Agenda, which is Resolution C1 through C22. Do I have a motion?
I'll motion.
Motion by Trustee Cassius and a second.
Second.
Second by Trustee Burke. On a motion and second, Trustee Alonso.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick is absent, Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Cassius.
Yes.
Trustee Egan.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Yes.
Vice President Munoz.
Yes.
President Villado. That moves us to our non-consent portion of the agenda. Resolution D1 is going to be tabled till the next meeting. Resolution, and I remind everybody that all of these resolutions are on our bulletin board, so I don't read the whole resolution. Resolution D2 is a change of meeting dates due to budget calendars and change in our calendar. It is listed on the bulletin board, is D2. This will be advertised, and it will be posted on our website and City Hall. Do I have a motion?
I will make that motion.
And a second.
I'll second.
So I have a motion by Vice President Munoz, and a second by President Villado for Resolution D2. Trustee Alonso.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick is absent, Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Cassius.
Yes.
Trustee Egan.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Yes.
Vice President Munoz.
Yes.
President Villado.
Yes.
Next up is D3. This is appointment of legal, reapportment of legal services, special, and it's for the calendar February 26, 2020, to and including March 19, 2020. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Vice President Munoz, second by President Villado. On that motion and second, Trustee Alonso.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick is absent, Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Cassius.
Yes.
Trustee Egan.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Yes.
Vice President Munoz.
Yes.
President Villado.
Yes.
D4 is for Legal Services General, and this will be February 26 to and including March 19. Do I have a motion?
I will make that motion.
Motion by the Vice President, and a second by our President. So a motion and a second, Trustee Alonso.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick is absent, Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Cassius.
Yes.
Trustee Egan.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Yes.
Vice President Munoz.
Yes.
President Villado.
Yes.
D5 is Appointment of Bond Councils, February 26 to March 19. Do I have a motion? Motion by the Vice President, a second.
I second.
Second by the President. On that motion and second, Trustee Alonso.
Yes.
Trustee Broderick is absent, Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Cassius.
Yes.
Trustee Egan.
Yes.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Yes.
Vice President Munoz.
Yes.
President Villado.
Yes.
Resolution D6, whereas the Board of Education is authorized to appoint a certificated employee upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, in the leave of absence approved for Assistant Principal Patricia Dubek at William Schuman Midtown Community School. The recommendation is that the Board appoint Nicholas Capades as the interim Assistant Principal. Do I have a motion?
I will make that motion.
Motion by the Vice President, a second.
I will second.
I do have a question from the audience. Mr. Anthony D'Amico has a question on D6. Anthony, just state your address for our reporter.
Anthony D'Amico, 73 West Sixth Street. My question is, this obviously is an out-of-district hire for this interim placement. Any Bayonne teachers, staff, I'm in the mic. Want me to get closer? Here we go, ready? All right. Any Bayonne staff that has the appropriate certification was in consideration for this? And is there a reason why we went out of district instead of giving our staff the chance to move up even in an interim basis?
Superintendent, would you like to answer that?
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. It's an interim position. If we chose someone from in-house within our school district, then we'd have to fill that position as well. This is anticipation of whether the individual they're replacing, who is out on leave, they should be coming back next week, but if they don't, then we're covered in the interim. We actually should have done this a little while ago, so it was kind of hard to find somebody, but that's the reason. If we choose somebody, we just have to backfill the spot. And this is just in case of an emergency, which this happens to be. So thank you, sir.
No problem, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. I'm sorry, yes, we have a motion and a second. On that motion and second, Trustee Alonso.
No.
That's a no, Trustee Broderick is absent, Trustee Burke.
Yes.
Trustee Cassius.
Yes.
Trustee Egan.
Abstain.
Trustee Finerty.
Yes.
Trustee Wilbeck.
Abstain.
Vice President Munoz.
Yes.
President Villado.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, that is all the business before the board, but we do have a number of questions. I'd like to remind the audience, there is a three-minute rule. I will raise my hand around two and a half minutes to give you a heads-up, but I will cut you off at three. Let's start. Verona Moros, 730 Avenue C, I'm sorry, 730 Avenue A.
To begin, I would like to address and say that I am referring to the law at hand. In 2018, the state of New Jersey passed the New Jersey State Law, which states, and I quote, "This bill requires each Board of Education to provide instruction on the political, economic, and social contributions of persons with disabilities and lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender people in an appropriate place in the curriculum of middle school and high school students as a part of the district's implementation of the core curriculum." This bill also provides that when adopting instructional materials for use in the schools of the district, a Board of Education may only adopt instructional materials that accurately portray the cultural and economic diversity of society, including political, economic, social, and contributions of people with disabilities. Somehow, this bill that required schools to focus on it only focused on members of the LGBTQ community. In appropriate ways and places in this curriculum, they have been completely disregarded in the following ways. Number one, the part of the law states, "This bill requires each Board of Education to provide instruction on political, economic, and social contributions," which was completely ignored and omitted. The Department of Education handed the responsibility of implementation to the Law of Garden State Advocacy Group, that this is a private group who clearly had a certain agenda. The question here is, does the New Jersey Department of Education hand curriculum designs for other topics to other advocacy groups? According to the best of our knowledge, no advocacy groups for people of disabilities or people of color were ever invited into the NJ Department of Education to design a curriculum. My third point is that the Garden State Advocacy Group has chosen its own Curriculum Creation Committee, and we do not know what role the state plays in choosing the members of the committee. My fourth point, the new pilot curriculum has lesson plans regarding LGBTQ issues in math, science. Why don't issues of slavery, socioeconomic status, gender discrimination, genocide against Native Americans are also taught in math and science? The curriculum crosses the boundaries of what is age-appropriate and chose explicit material for children as young as 11 years old. We wonder how the Department of Education has approved such explicit material to be part of our curriculum. The curriculum mainly focuses on gender identity, sexual orientation, instead...
Two and a half minutes to...
...instead of the contraption of the LGBTQ community. The state of New Jersey and the Department of Education seems to forget that a state-sponsored institution of education, public school receiving taxpayers' money, does not have the legal right to engage in a program of systematic thought reform. The First Amendment protects the right of freedom of conscience, the right to keep our innermost thoughts free from government intrusion. It also protects the right to be free from compelled speech. As the Supreme Court declared in a landmark case of West Virginia, State Board of Education versus Barnett, "If there is any fixed star in our constitutional constellation, it is no official, high, or petty can describe what shall orthodox and politics..."
I'm sorry, but our three minutes is up. Thank you. Would you, excuse me, excuse me?
Excuse me.
Excuse me. Anyone that's reading from a prepared script, would you please put a copy, give a copy to our recorder, please, at the front table? Okay. Next up is Mr. Albert Aziz, 163 West Seventeenth Street. Like I said, if anybody's reading from the script when you're done, please give it to our recorder.
As a parent, I have a right to, what age I can explain to my child about certain things in life. I have nothing against this group of people, but as a parent, I have a right to explain to my children once they are of older age. As a parent, digging throughout history to find examples of LGBT people who have played a role in significant events in the world is not teaching history. It's selecting history to push a political agenda, putting a weight significance on someone based solely on their sexual or gender identity, is a distortion of the truth, at best, and discriminatory at worst. There is a value in fighting for tolerance and acceptance to make sure people, regardless of their sexual orientation, are not discriminated against. But it's quite another thing to promote a biased political agenda among children, remove parents from the conversation, and then call everyone who questions the motives and counts the buckets. We are solely focused on protecting our children and standing firm in our effort to stop the LGBT agenda from being added to all our public schools as Governor Murphy laws amend mandates scheduled to be implanted in all New Jersey public middle and high school in September 2020. We must explain to the public school board that they have the legal authority to draft their own curriculum. Their only responsibility is to comply with the state's learning standards that oversee the new law signed by Governor Murphy in January 2019. It's inaccurate and misinformation to think that any school needs to use the indoctrination being forced into many schools by Garden State Equality. They are writing a curriculum, not the curriculum. I have two boxes here. The first box has some good words. It could be religious, it could be from personal life, it could be something that you could tell people what to do in a good way, but this box couldn't be in a school because it's a free of religious. And I have another box here that talks about some people, or a certain amount of people, that they have their behave, their doing, and...
You're at two and a half minutes.
This also, it should be, I want to say equal, because it's in a different way, but I want to say, as I'm not accepting or keeping away the spiritual and the good things to taught to children or students, I could keep away any things that parents not allow their children to be taught in school for their good. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker, Joanna Kedis, 24 West Fifty-first Street.
We are not against the freedom of a certain division of people in the community as long as their freedom does not affect the well-being of others. Others' freedom shall stop at the limits of my freedom. I have all the rights to teach my kids about my religion, my beliefs, and my culture, especially in their young age. My younger son is five years old. I'm just starting to teach him about my religion beliefs, my culture traditions and principles. And now schools teach him different beliefs, and they are all against how I want to raise my child. I'm sorry, it's my role and my right as a parent. I send my kids to schools to learn and to get the education they need to build themselves and their community, not to learn moral values that, in my opinion, will disfigure their identity. Different morals, values should be taught at home or other private institutions. Learning about LGBT curriculum and relationships is something that should be handled on the cultural level, not via standard school educational curriculums. Government officials and educators need to look at us and mean, and, I'm sorry, and I mean the parents as paying customers. And those schools are funded by our tax money, so they have to take in careful consideration our right to not subject our young children to such materials if we see it inappropriate to their age. As parents, we are the guardians of our children, not the state. Our country is built on freedom, let's not forget that. And why schools specifically teach the LGBT curriculum and make it mandatory as we are in a free country? So let's be fair with all the division of peoples. Let's teach everything about Christianity, Muslim, Hindus, and Jewish people. And all other divisions of people and everyone will say, yes, my beliefs are the right one. This way, the children will get scattered because they learned concepts and basics in life against each other, and this will always make them in conflict with their families and their religion. As they will look always to their parents, they will teach them false religion and false beliefs. The school and home are supposed to complete one another to build a stable...
You're at two and a half minutes.
...and stable generation psychologically, then they can build this country. But at this situation, home will be against the school, and we will see at the end, who will win with the kids? At the end, the only victim will be the children, and you will have generations has conflicts between family and schools. In the meantime, schools ask for parents sign...
Excuse me, Ms. Kedis, that's three minutes. Would you please, don't, would you please give your speech to the floor? Next up is Mr. John, John Mata, 486 Avenue C. Is John still with us?
Good evening, my name is John Mata, and I would like to talk about the new curriculum that was recently constructed to be taught in schools. As a student, I would like to learn that, I wouldn't like to learn this new curriculum because it's against my religion, family beliefs, and morals. This curriculum would be placed, this curriculum that would be placed would violate my freedom of religion because they will be forcing me to learn stuff that I don't want to learn, also, I don't want to learn it. Also, thinking about the future, I wouldn't like my children to learn these new ethics. Thank you.
Next up is Crilio Samuel, 394 Broadway.
Good evening, my name is Crilio Samuel. I have been a resident of Bayonne for the last 16 years. Raised and taught in the city's school system, a product of this Board of Education meticulous curriculum. I currently serve in my church, teaching children ages 11 to 14. The rites of the church and its hymns bringing them up to be civil Christians in the religion as well as good citizens to their community, protecting it for generations after them. It is for this reason that I was asked to speak as a representative from my church, to look out for the best interest of my class students as well as to represent the concern that is on the minds of parents throughout the city. I am here to voice the great dissent of a multitude of people that are concerned with the mandated LGBTQ curriculum that is being adopted in New Jersey. that are concerned with the mandated LGBTQ curriculum that is being adopted in New Jersey schools. We believe that sexual orientation is not the job of schools, but it is the sole right of parents to discuss with their children in their homes based on their personal religious beliefs and ideology. Also, the role of the school in young people's lives should be to educate them in reading literacy, mathematics, and the sciences, but should not sexualize their minds by consuming their thoughts with this agenda. It is the job of parents and teachers to work together to provide the best education possible to our children and to fill their minds with knowledgeable information which would carry them through in their adult lives. The definition of school as described by philosophers is a group of people who hold a common doctrine or follow the same teacher. However, if this curriculum is implemented, would be forced upon these children who do not possess the same doctrine of beliefs. When building a new curriculum, we must bring our minds to think like a child to understand how they will react to this new system and how these consequences and what will be the consequences in their sensitive age and by using our adult experiences to continue to make these decisions. It is in the Constitution of the United States that we find the First Amendment protecting freedom of religion, freedom of speech, and freedom to petition as it states, "Congress shall make no law respecting and establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof or abridging the freedom of speech." If this curriculum is implemented, it will abridge their freedom of religion as it will instill in their minds ideas that are against our beliefs, our faiths, our morals, and as a result, breaking the First Amendment. Furthermore, as it is the right of every person to choose the way they ought to live, their lives, and express themselves freely. The same way also, we have the right to our beliefs, our ideology, and what should and should not be exposed to our youth. We object to this curriculum because it will expose young minds of our children to sexual notations beyond their grasp and is considered by the Orthodox Coptic Church community an obvious attempt to ruin our children's innocence. We object to this curriculum because it will openly disrespect our faith, morals, and values as well as God's natural law and will cause a grave and serious offense to us.
Next up, Dominic Bolles, 20 Andrews Street.
Hello. My name is Dominic Velez. I am the Bayonne High School Student Government Vice President. I am one of the proud and openly gay students at Bayonne High School. I am sitting today with Ms. Patel in the Gay Straight Alliance we have in our school. School is a place where students are supposed to feel safe, happy, represented, heard, and comfortable. School is a place where students, no matter who they are, where they come from, what they look like, who they love, they all come together in a safe learning environment to live and experience, and most importantly, learn. Our school is very diverse, as you may have noticed by now. This is what makes Bayonne High School and all schools across America amazing, beautiful institutions. Our diversities are a few of the many things that we need to learn as the youth of today and the leaders of tomorrow. To learn is to grow and to respect. As the youth of today grow up to be the leaders of tomorrow, they will see that people all around them are diverse in their sexual orientations in the real world, just as we are all diverse in race and religion. It is my belief that every single person is entitled to their opinion and belief. This is another thing that makes our country beautiful. You may have a gay coworker, a black cashier, a Catholic bus driver. These people exist. And I think that the exposure to the real world full of diverse people is equivalent to the exposure of how great these people in history were, even if they are different from ourselves. This is all, I apologize, I lost my place. These are all things that we, as a functioning society, must keep in mind. Our society is beautiful because we are diverse. Our history is significant because we grew into this free, beautiful, diverse society. If we ignore that, we will never reach a place in our world where we are not hateful towards each other and no one is afraid to leave their house and come to school. Remember that diversity is beauty and power. I would like to thank the Bayonne Board of Education for giving everyone the place and platform to speak and allowing these students to use their voice. I would like to thank Ms. Patel and the GSA for bringing these amazing students behind me to speak with me. Thank you very much.
Next up is Mr. Imad Balls, 175 West 22nd Street.
Excuse me, just one moment, please. I just like to, I understand we're on opposing sides, but we do have to show respect toward each other. So please, let's remember that. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. In the beginning, let's be thoroughly clear. We are not against any individual or groups. We love and respect everyone. We believe that everyone has a right to choose how to live their life and what to teach their children in their own home. As a parent of a student in this public system school in the state of New Jersey, we have very strong concern about protecting our children regarding LGBTQ curriculum going to be affected September 2020. We are concerned about increased pressure on our kids about teaching sexual material in the classroom. And this will have a negative impact on our children. Those materials should not be discussed as a part of mandatory curriculum in public school. We believe that public school violates a parent's rights and the student's religion freedom as at young age, the school should not be provided any information regarding the sexuality, gender identity, or anatomy of human being other than the burbos of scientific explanation of reproduction. The school, as a public institution, has no obligation to provide any information regarding what is right or wrong regarding human beliefs or relationship. We send our children to school to learn topics such as science and math, not to figure out their sexual identity. It is assaulted to our freedom clearly stated in the United Constitution to teach our children about lifestyles that goes against our family values and our religion practice. Our tax dollars should never be used to teach sexual acts that goes against religion belief. The school have the duty to educate their children not to sexualize them or strip their innocence. Those things are to be taught in home only. As a parents, we are the only guardians of our children. Our country is built on freedom of choice. Let's not forget that. We are asking the Board of Education to listen to the community voice. And we will be proud of them if you do this. Please reconsider LGBT curriculum. Thank you very much.
Next up, Madonna Zakari, 1006 Broadway, Apartment 121. Yes, yes.
Good evening, sorry. Good evening, faculty, fellow classmates, and parents. Today I will be speaking on behalf of several others with the same beliefs as me on the issue teaching about LGBTQ as a regular subject in schools. I strongly believe that it may not be appropriate. People from different backgrounds, religion, and skin color may find this offensive to their family background. Although this is, although in this modern society, we must acknowledge these issues, this could cause several mishaps due to the fact that some religions are against such beliefs. Classes such as these should at least be made optional. For example, puberty classes are optional due to some people feeling uncomfortable learning about such topics. If that's optional, shouldn't LGBTQ classes be too? Instead of learning about it in school, some parents may want to tell their kids about it themselves in order to teach them right from wrong. The society we live in today is curious, there is no doubt. Young children that may not be any better and learn about this may become clouded with false thoughts. This could begin to falsely question their own sexuality just because everyone around them is part of the LGBTQ community. It could merely be students following a trend. It is understandable that we must be aware of our society and the things going on in the world around us. But the classes should be made optional in order not to offend, confuse, or make anyone uncomfortable. Thank you.
Ms. Nima Kamel, 441 Avenue E. Nima Kamel? I'll put that to the side for now. Sammy Shihara, 36 Kelly Parkway? Yes? Okay.
Good evening and thank you, everybody. I just have a question. All right, what steps has the Board of Education taken to select materials on political, economic, and social contributions of persons with disabilities and just being gay, bisexual, and transgender people? Thank you.
Veronica Kamel, Bayonne High School? Marina Melik, 238 Bayview?
Good evening. I'm a student at New Jersey City. I went to first high school. I came here when I was in sixth grade. I was never taught to learn about sexuality or any different topic about other groups of people. Just to be clear, I have nothing against LGBTQ or any other person. I show love, care, respect to everyone. My question is, how is it possible for parents not to decide what their kids are allowed to be learned or taken to concern at school? But they're not allowed, I mean, sorry, how they are allowed to, to, how they're not allowed to make a choice for their kids, to make a decision on what they should be learning on LGBTQ or any other group of people? But they are not, they are actually not allowed to give them vaccination or Telenol in school. They actually take the parent's concern or actually their decision to say yes or no if their kids are sick to take Telenol or not, but you're not concerning them about taking them, feeding them mentally. Also, when I went to school in high school, we were taught about sexual, sexual education. I was one of the people not to be concerned because of my beliefs. I was, I had to be forced out of class because this was against my belief and religion. So I went to the library because I believed so along with other six students. However, that one class was 25 students. But anyway, they actually concerned our parents to say yes or no to those certain topics. So at least give the parents a choice. And I'm a parent too. I have a kid who's 11 months old. So please, consider this and make us have a choice to say yes or no to let our kids learn those topics. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Abdulgani Huda, 232 Avenue B?
Okay, next one.
Verona Marcos, 730 Avenue A? You should put two cars. Leo Willis, 5 Rose Court?
Good evening. Pretty much, I had all this, this long speech. But pretty much everybody said everything, so I'm just gonna get right to the point. Basically, I have a son that attends Bayonne High School. And I just want to get to the point where I think everything that's being shown to these children is not for everybody. At least give us a chance to opt out, not be mandatory. I have, I have nothing against the LGBTQ community. I have a gay sister, by the way. And we touched on these situations, I mean, these sort of subjects. And she's, she even tells me that this is not the way to go about it. I mean, you know, and she's gay. But like I said, all these, all these, these subjects that should be taught to our children, like, I just want to touch on one subject, where I took my son to the bank to open up a bank account for him. And I signed a paper. And he looked at, he looked at my signature. He said, "I want to learn how to do that." I said, "What do you mean?" He said, "I want to learn how to sign my name." And I thought about it. I said, "We're, we're teaching the children the wrong subjects." All right, he doesn't even know how to sign his name, but it's going to be mandatory that he's learning about the LGBT community, about, about someone in history that has done something like, you know, for history, but you're, you're, you're bringing up his sexual orientation. For what? That means, that doesn't, it's not a factor. It doesn't matter what his sexual orientation was. The point was, he's done what he's done in history. He or she done what he done in history. Leave it at that. His sexual orientation had nothing to do with it. So let's focus on the, the main things, like teaching these children how to write their signature. Learn other things and then, you know, go back at it. Like I said, I have nothing against the LGBT community. I love everybody. I'm not making it a religious thing or a political thing. We just want to be able to opt out and choose what we want for our children. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Kamel, Nicholas Oresko School? No. Ayub, Ayub, 28 Avenue C? Mr. Anthony D'Amico had a question for open or no? No. Amal Hanna, 441 Avenue E? Amal Hanna? Amal Hanna? Imad Mikal? Amal, would you just give us, Imad, would you give us your address?
Yeah, 177 West 27th Street, Bayonne, New Jersey. Imad Mikal. First of all, thanks so much for giving me opportunity to speak. Being active listeners to my opinion, please. As a US citizen and taxpayer for the United States, I'm in the United States of America more than 20 years now in the city of Bayonne. Actually, I'm highly concerning. And let me say, a lot of parents of our American Egyptian, on the Egyptian communities and families, parents, and other people also are feeling extremely sad regarding this LGBT curriculum being forced in 2020 school year. I would like to say that we are not pleased. Again, we are not pleased to enforce this curriculum, which again is our religion, against our faith, against our culture, which is against everything. Also, it's against any scientific fact, which there is no evidence yet. Again, no evidence yet. It's a genetic or chromosomal or any kind of mutation. Mutation means sudden change of genetics or chromosomes activity like in virus, like the flu and so on. So there's no evidence for that. I'm so sorry to say that. We declare that clearly that we are not against anybody. We love everybody. We like everybody. This is the core of our religion. We are loving each body. We help them. And we pray for them. And everybody are equal. We don't care about religion, about faith, about anything. We are human beings. And in the same time, in the case of, if we make an imagination, or imagination, I'm so sorry, that after 10, 15, 20 years, if the same sex marriage as example happened, okay, where is that? okay, where is that second generation? Nothing. So the productivity of our United States of America will be reduced. The economy will be damaged. The productivity reduced and the economy will be damaged. I have a PhD from Britain in pharmaceutical industry, an international business in the pharmaceutical industry. I know what I'm saying. Go to Lancet, go to Google, go to any already effective research where you will find nothing, zero about the genetics or chromosomal chain. It's a kind of behavior, it's a kind of psychological distress. So a dramatically decrease in US productivity due to the dramatic decrease of health level. Watch the TV, from five to seven seconds every time or minute, I'm so sorry. You will find the advertisement for the AIDS, for sexual transmitted disease, for everything. Why? Because this is cost over cost. We will pay that from our taxes, from our tools.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, that's three minutes. Next up, Caitlin Patella, 669 Avenue A.
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Patella, and I'm the art therapist and co-advisor of the LGBTQ and Allies Club here at Bayonne High School. Thank you for once again allowing me the opportunity to speak as an ally on behalf of my beloved students and in support of the thoughtful and thorough implementation of the state mandated LGBTQ inclusive curriculum bill. Much has been discussed at both the local and state levels regarding this law and how it will be enacted in the coming school year. To clarify, the intent of this bill is not and has never been to push an agenda or a lifestyle on anyone. The focus here is on the fair and meaningful depictions of a collective, not on individuals' private lives. The law merely serves to ensure representation and validation for a group historically marginalized because of what science has proven to be their biological differences, sexuality and gender identity. The conversation is not one based in morality or a chosen lifestyle. Rather, we are here seeking representation in the education system with the same thought we offer Black history, women's history, and soon, the history of those with disabilities, which will also be mandated by the bill so many wish to discredit. These histories are American histories, and we cannot opt out of sharing this collective experiences that shape our country. As I brought to your attention in the last meeting, our rhetoric can have profound impact on those around us, particularly the most vulnerable and underrepresented. The hypersexualization of LGBTQ people, especially young people, has historically been a dangerously narrow-minded way of viewing a person's humanity. Focusing the conversation exclusively on an individual's private life negates the many layers of who we are as people, and in this case, can foster misinformation that fuels fear, hatred, and bigotry that I showed last month to be hugely damaging, even deadly. This curriculum seeks to counteract that limited narrative, exposing students and staff of all sexualities and gender expressions to the rich history of social and cultural contributions made by the LGBTQ community. How we choose to act going forward as educators, as role models, as community leaders, will set the tone for how this curriculum will be treated in the future. Firstly, the care that we show and our implementation of this work sets the stage for how it will be valued by our heterosexual and cisgender staff and students. I personally look forward to the opportunity to explore more deeply a history that, while not my own, has most certainly shaped American culture. More critically, we are showing our LGBTQ youth how we value them as human beings worthy of being seen and of being treated with compassion, care, and equality. This work deserves to go forward with depth, with proper training, and with the sensitivity and thoughtfulness denied to this group for too long. In the words of one of the most intelligent and brave and inspiring students I know, glossing over this curriculum tells LGBTQ kids that they are not important. Please, I urge you, let's join together to put in the work necessary to show these amazing kids how very important they truly are. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joshua Dubose, 77 West 11th.
Hello, and good, and good evening. My name is Joshua Dubose, and I'm currently a senior of the class of 2020. This evening, I wanted to speak upon the importance of knowledge and what it means for our future. Now, I'm no legal person, no, no doctor or lawyer, and I'm not an awesome teacher like Ms. Patella or Ms., um, or Mr. Woods are. However, today I found that I'm frustrated with myself. Frustrated that I have sat on the sidelines for far too long. I am frustrated that while my fellow friends were being spoken down to, teased, called funny names were isolated, that I froze for a moment, completely mute. I am frustrated that while my fellow friends were standing up and fighting for what they believe in, all I could do was really smile after the fact and walk away. Frustrated that the weeks prior, that when we convened on this topic of the LGBTQ curriculum, my mentors that guided me and taught me the horrors of past prejudice were standing up to opposition while I was sitting silent. However, tonight, I write my name, my phone number, and my address to stand with those that I love and fight with them. I fight tonight because I can't bear to see prejudice in the future, which will allow, which, which show, which would allow future generations to feel that what tore love to shreds in history. I fight tonight because this curriculum will convey to thousands of students the hard work, love, and hope, and what hope can truly do. This curriculum would highlight the many, many awesome people that have not only fought for what was right, but who fought for others. We need the younger generations to understand that the hatred in the past with its venomous bite can be cured, that the wound of prejudice can be healed through the bandages of compassion, and the gate of evil can be finally be broken with hope and light. I would want my child to be able to understand that while he or she learns about the senseless killings of World War I, or the atrocities prejudice caused in World War II, that he or she learns about the people that fought, lived, or even died for freedom. And many of those people are from the LGBT community. So, so I encourage everyone to look to the person to your left and the person to your right, and just, and just thank them for being who they are, no matter what values or opinions they have. I find it interesting that we are all in this room for the future. We are in the same room, fighting for what we believe in and how we would like to see the future. So I ask not just Ms. Patella, or not just Mr. Woods, or not just the board, but all of us, what will you choose? I learned that choice is the most powerful thing we have as human beings. We all know the choices of the past. So I ask you again, what will you choose? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, next up is Joyce Abdulmus, 42 Marina Drive.
Good evening. My name is Joyce Abdalmasia, and I'm a 10th grade student at Bayonne High School. I would like to start this off by saying that I am in no way, shape, or form against any member or members of the LGBTQ plus community, nor am I against any person. However, as soon as a person's rights impose on my individual beliefs, a problem arises. The wish to teach sexuality subjects should not pose on my right to not learn them. This country was founded on the ideology of freedom and the importance of individual rights. The Constitution is heavily influenced by political theorist John Locke, who was a major individual rights activist. John Locke states that "A liberty to follow my own will in all things where the rule prescribes not, and not to be subject to the inconstant, uncertain, unknown, arbitrary will of another man, instilling any subject that is not a core subject like mathematics, science, English, or history, like LGBTQ plus studies, which should be voted on by parents and students alike, as it will personally affect them." Public schools should not make this a mandatory part of education. However, if they wish, they can make this an optional course or an elective class. We should have the option to opt out of these classes, just as we had the choice to opt out of Love Smart classes in middle school. Children in elementary schools will be exposed to the complexity of a curriculum that deals with gender dysphoria and finding out your identity or sexual orientation at a premature age. These are mature topics that should be handled very delicately with the aid, guidance, and wills of parents. And under school time constraint and the lack of psychological training of teachers, schools are not properly equipped to expose and teach such heavy and mature subjects to children. Children build an identity through what they are told and taught by adults. They are psychologically naive and susceptible to what their teachers teach them. Questioning identity should not be part of school curriculum, because this is outside of what schools teach and what they are meant to teach. Schools heavily influence children mentally, and they are not responsible for teaching this subject, because the effects of it can be detrimental. Teaching this subject against a student's will can cause an identity crisis and severe gender dysphoria. Schools are meant to enhance your knowledge through the teachings of important skills like reading and performing calculations. Studies on sexuality, whether it be straight sexualities or not, have no place within these enriching and much-needed subjects. LGBTQ plus subjects can be taught through an extra course or after-school club, but they should not be imposed on us students, and they should not be a mandatory part of our studies or curriculum, because any form of sexuality studies have no place in public schools. Thank you.
I, I do have a card, a couple of cards on a separate topic, so I'd like to let them go. Uh, Carol Bissotis, 11 Pavonia Court, has a question in regards to substitute teacher for inclusion teachers.
Good evening. My name is Carol Bissotis. I live at 11 Pavonia Court. Sorry to change the tone of tonight's meeting, but...
Thank you.
Um, I have three children that are enrolled in Bailey School. One of my children is in the inclusion class in the fifth grade. First and foremost, I'd like to thank and applaud his son, uh, his teacher, Mrs. Kazar. She's the most kind, caring, and supportive teacher, and literally is the topic of my son's after-school discussion on a daily basis. Mrs. Kazar has put the academic life back into him. She encourages and challenges him every day. We owe a tremendous amount of Nicholas, Nicholas's academic success to her. But with that being said, I have a few questions that I would like someone on this panel to please answer for me. The first is, why is it that my son's inclusion teacher is being pulled from the inclusion classroom setting to be a substitute teacher for the general education classroom? Also, when Mrs. Kazar is absent, for whether it's in services, meetings, or personal reasons, that there is no inclusion substitute teacher provided? There are no other special education teachers in the fifth grade at Bailey School, so in her absence, I need to know who is administering his tests and who is implementing Nicholas's modifications on all of his tests. When I inquired previously, I was advised that the substitute pool was limited, and staffing in a general education classroom versus staffing an inclusion classroom teacher was priority. My son, to date, has 12-plus days so far this school year when the inclusion teacher was not in the classroom. If my son was absent for 12 or plus days, I would need to provide all sorts of documentation explaining such. So as I stand here, I'm requesting answers and solutions as to why we don't have the support that he needs to succeed academically on a daily basis. I'm sure as educators, you are all aware that pulling a special education teacher to cover a general education teacher or not substituting at all is illegal. This needs to be addressed, and a resolution needs to be implemented. So can anyone shed any light on this for me?
Kenny?
I'm superintendent.
How are you, Ms. Bissotis?
I'm very well.
So, a few years ago, we were at a 45 to 50% absent fill rate. So the problem was huge back then. We have made great strides. We're over 80% on a daily basis. The new business administrator, Mr. Castle, and I have just met with a few other companies to see if we could supplement to get to 100%. There's not a district in the state of New Jersey that is at 100%. And again, we have made great improvements in the area to fill every class with a substitute. Now, when we do have a class that is not being supervised, obviously, we need to have a certified staff member in front of that class. I will look into why there hasn't been a rotation. I will be calling you tomorrow for further details, and believe me, we are working on a solution to get to that 100%.
I understand that there are emergencies, but when you have 12-plus days in a school year, it's unacceptable. It's unacceptable for a student to be absent that many days, so it should be unacceptable for his inclusion teacher not to be there. And this by no means is a personal attack against her, because everyone is entitled to their sick days and personal days, but when you're pulling her to backfill another general education classroom in the same building, I have a problem with that. You know, you just passed your resolution today to have a assistant principal. Pull him and let him come teach a class. Right?
We, we do hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
If Yvonne Bernanas, 138 West 30th Street, is still here, there was a question in regards to Resolution 827 with Highscope, if you're still here? Sally Azar, 18 West 11th Street? Yes? No? Okay. Marina Izat, 81 West 15th Street?
Good evening. My name is Marina Izat, and I'm a junior at Bayonne High School. We are gathered here today to speak about LGBTQ learning standards. Learn, LGBTQ stands for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer. I just want to start off by saying that I have nothing against anyone who believes in this, but me personally, I don't. I am a Christian, a Coptic Orthodox Christian. I believe and was taught in my religion that marriage is the union of one man and one woman, just like God himself created Adam and Eve for each other in the Book of Genesis. Also, in the Book of Genesis, there were two cities mentioned, Sodom and Gomorrah. These two cities were, were, were destroyed by fire by God himself because they were participating in sinful actions like homosexuality. The teachings of LGBTQ are offensive to me. As a student, teach me how to file my taxes. Couple days ago, I got my W2 paper, and I didn't even know how to do it. Or teach me how to buy a house. I know I'm still young, but I don't even know how to get started. My parents came to this country so that we could have our freedom and better lives. As a US citizen, isn't, it's an assault to our freedoms that are clearly stated in the US Constitution to teach the youth and students about lifestyles that go against our family values, our faith, our religion, and our religious practices. The First Amendment states that Congress shall make no law respecting the establishment of religion or prohibiting the free excuse of thereof abrogating the freedom of speech or of the press, or the right to the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievance. The LGBTQ curriculum is disrespecting both my religion, my faith, and my rights, and that is why we are all here today to peacefully assemble and petition you all for the readdress of this curriculum. I have three younger siblings that attend a Bayonne Public Elementary School. My siblings have to be caught about a topic that goes against our religion and strips them from their innocence. This is absolutely unlawful. On behalf of all the Coptic Christians here today, we ask you to readdress this curriculum. Thank you.
Wafan Nabi, 30 Newman Avenue?
My name is Wafan Nabi. I am a resident of Bayonne, New Jersey. I thank you for listening and giving me the opportunity to speak. I am here today as a taxpayer, as a parent, to talk about two concern, the gender identity and suppression policy number 5657. And as a parent, sorry again as this policy been passed, passed to, to the school where my kids go to. This story violates the privacy and the security of my daughter. The tighter I act through habits, discrimination between males and females based on their biological... biological sex don't require the abolition of their privacy. Under no circumstances can anyone be forced by the school officially to share a mutual space with a members of the opposite biological sex. I want to Bayonne Board of Education election because I care of the safety of my children. Protecting the student privacy is necessary to maintaining a safe and distraction-free learning environment for the student. But where is the safety here? If I don't feel the confidence to leave on leaving my kids on a school where they cannot protect their privacy. As is stated in the school website, if a student and his staff don't feel safe, the student cannot learn and that doctor cannot probably teach. I ask you, please reconsider this policy, the bathroom and the locker policy. It's a verbal law and the school don't have to comply with it. As a parent, I care about my children's schools and their teaching inside the schools. My second concern is about the LGBT curriculum. I'm not talking on any individual. I'm concerned on the LGBT curriculum being forced on 2020 school year. For the following some of Bayonne Board of Education meeting, I found some of the teacher and superintendents still don't have access to review this curriculum. Also, this curriculum has been provided by the Garden State Equality Organization, which has not been reviewed and will not be induced. From my understanding, been raised here that the school should work with the parents to educate, work with the parents to educate kids for their better future. Going to this direction, worry and not trusting what my kids been taught in the school or what the story they're reading in the classroom, which is the gain of my values and my beliefs, totally unacceptable. This violates our First Amendment, the freedom of religion and speech. This way, our kids, this way are the kids being turned against their parents.
That is three minutes. Thank you. Abdel Kabeer Baal, 117 West 35th Street? No? Marina Abdess Shaheed, 565 Avenue E?
Hello, everybody. My name is Mary Ann Abdess Shaheed. I have been living in Bayonne since 1996. I actually came and we went to Midtown Community School and then went to Bayonne High School. We have migrated from Egypt to have a better education and as we, and we actually did. I'm a pharmacist now currently and I'm a mother of three kids. He's a second grader and one in pre-K and my daughter's still six months. My kids actually currently attend Beacon Christian Academy. However, I am planning eventually, like in the near future, I want to bring my kids to public school, but all these things, stuff that is going on right now, I feel like it's preventing me from bringing my kids to public schools. This curriculum is, the LGBT curriculum is not designed to teach history. They are designed to teach young children with ideology that goes against my Christian faith as well as faith of many other religions. To be a hundred percent clear, I'm not against any of these individuals or community as my religion taught me to love and respect all human beings. I am just against the goals of this curriculum and how it confuse my young children at such an early age when their minds are still developing and plants ideas in their minds that they mislead them. My children do not need to learn about gender orientation. That should be left only to parents and what they believe, not to schools and teachers to teach to our kids. Since we do not teach religion in public schools, we should not also be teaching sexual orientation, inclination either. Opting out, like they said, should be an option, like someone also said, to make an elective, to do an after-school or night class or something else, but not to be taught in a regular school day basis. We also, we need your help as a Board of Education to always provide our children with unbiased education. And thank you in advance for your help and care about our children. God bless you all.
Thank you.
Mara Abraham, 161 West 10th Street?
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. According to our life nature also, it's clearly stated in the U.S. Constitution, all people are free, free to practice their beliefs, worship, free to express their feelings, also free to choose how and what to teach their kids. Kids, I'm talking about kids under twelve years old. These kids, we need to prepare them to growing up normally and mature, men's and women's because they are our generation, the future generation which we depend on them for better life. I'm using my right today as a parent to say no for LGBT curriculum from being implement. It will steal our kids' childhood, which is nothing will bring it back. They wouldn't grown up normally. Again, I'm gonna repeat everything, or I'm gonna repeat something everybody said before. We're not against specific people, specific group. I work in one of the federal job and most of my coworkers, not all of them, some of them, they support LGBT and some of them lesbian, gays. I totally respect them, a lot of them my friends, but I like my kids to raise normal and balanced and normal. I see it not for the kids, this subject to be teaching in a school. It's maybe good for adults. Kids, as they cannot stay home alone, they cannot cross the street alone, they cannot drive or drink alcohol or cannot marry or practice any sexual relationship under sixteen years old, otherwise called a crime if somebody tried to do this with the kids. I see kids, they not allowed to getting any information about this LGBT to change their gender or to get any kind of information in this small age. Kids under sixteen years old, they not ready to understand the result from practice or learning these behaviors or these lessons. Am I hurt or harm them? It might affect their innocent and peaceful balance about their nature. It will definitely distract their concentration in normal life, even in a school.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Next up, Munir Saman, 26 Columbus Drive?
Munir Saman. I used to be a teacher of ESL in Catholic community service, which is Catholic charities. Okay, I just retired like a few months ago. Okay, from my view, we have to thank you all for one thing. You, by your meeting, you have united the old Egyptian community, whether Muslim or Christians, together on one issue. The issue is that our culture, beside our religions, whether Muslim or not, even the Jews who used to live in Egypt, they had the same rules, morals, and they, all of them, they have their faith coming from the same, from the same religion and from the same origin, which is Abraham, okay? So we understand that the Catholic Church, the Muslim community, the Orthodox Church, they all reject that program that you are giving and you are exposing our kids to, in this, in this situation. Anyway, what I want to say is that it's, it's very confusing for the kid when he goes home and talk to his mother or his father, that he has, that his friend has two daddies at home or two mommies at home. That will be very confusing and it's not, I cannot explain it to him. It's unexplainable to the kid. So have mercy on the little kids and try to get a second opinion on that. Another thing, and final thing, I wonder, are you considering the majority of the people here who attended, and unluckily, that many of them left the room, are you going to take some kind of voting on that? I don't know whether you are going to do that, but you got the idea and you heard so many people are against this program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Walid Musad, 195 West First Street? Walid Musad, M.A.S.O.U.D., 195 West First?
My name is Walid Musad. I live in 195 West First Street in Bayonne and also I own a pre-school in your city. First of all, we have director meeting every month. About four months ago, the Board of Education from Trenton came and they trying to board it for pre-school and we get denied. Second of all, I'm just wondering, the money that he was brought in to put this curriculum in the school, it will be better if you go for more science for the kids or more sport for the kids, more activity for the kids. By you having this curriculum in this school, what are you looking for? Are you guys looking to have more lesbian and gays? Or it will be better off if you have more science or you have more math or you have more sports or any activity? We have paid so much money and we are willing to pay more money to give more better education for these kids. I do have a teacher in my school. I gave her sixty thousand dollars for a pre-K for three years old. It's not about the money, it's about the children. What I'm telling my children, go learn about gay and lesbian. So what next can I do? He wanna dig more. Why would I open a can of worm to start it from the beginning? Why would I put the matches next to the gas to make a fire? What good is for these, the kids? What job will require down in the road, the kids must have this kind of curriculum for them to get the job? That kind of thing, it doesn't kind of make any difference. As we speaking right now, instead wasting the time and the money we have, Corona's going around, we can even figure out how to kind of heal it. And look at this, now we come to learn about this. And, and just to let you guys know, these kids these days, they have their eyes open, so please do not open it anymore. We trying to keep them as much as we can with Google search, with all the media, social media around, they're not the kid that we used to be anymore and thank you.
Thank you.
Nicole Lepari, 224 Avenue B?
I didn't write anything. I just, I want to say I'm a Bayonne High School graduate about ten years ago, since I've been here, and I've been out as a lesbian since I was twelve. I've learned about a lot of dead guys and a lot of straight dead guys and I can say I am neither dead, straight, or a guy, so just want to get that out there. In the ten years that, ago that I was at Bayonne High School, I can say that I learned about Shakespeare and Emily Dickinson in English, Rachel Maddow and Anderson Cooper in politics, Julius Caesar in history, and Leonardo da Vinci in art. Again, this was ten years ago. Something that all of these people have in common is that they're queer. So technically, we've been teaching this curriculum since I was in high school ten years ago. This has nothing to do about the fact of their personal sexual lives because there is so much more to LGBT individuals and what they offer that our kids need to learn. I know myself, as a student at Bayonne High School, if I knew that maybe one day I could be on TV talking about politics or creating works of art or writing books that students would one day be learning themselves, maybe I myself wouldn't have had thoughts of self-harm or suicide and that's something that you guys have to think about with the kids you have here tonight and the kids you have in your classrooms. It's very easy to see statistics on numbers. It's something very different to look into the eyes of these kids and tell them that, you know, they have no role models. Again, this has nothing to do with sex. It has to do with the individual and connecting with them as someone who they can see in themselves. Thank you.
Caitlin Feely, Bayonne High School?
Oh, God. Hi. I am a student at BHS and I'm also a member of the LGBTQ+ community. Growing up, I grew around straight people, pretty much that was considered the norm. Being straight, religion, I grew up all around that. But at the end of the day, I am actually identified as bisexual. This isn't something that I chose. Sexuality isn't something that you can choose and I feel like that's what people get mixed up sometimes. It's terrifying because with, you're considered the norm. The norm is straight and that gay shouldn't be allowed, so it's scary. I grew up, my sister, my whole family's straight, my sister's straight, she's actually my twin, but at the end of the day, again, I'm bisexual. So I hope that people know that we're with this, that they can actually help a lot of kids. Some people don't have, some kids don't have people to go to. Some kids sit and they think that they're weird or quote-unquote "not normal" because they love someone that is the same sex. And that shouldn't be that way. Putting in this education with LGBTQ+, it could let kids know that this is who they are, that they're valid, they're not alone in this situation. It's not a trend, it's not something that just started today. It's always been here, they've just been silent and they're not going to be silent anymore. And it can help those kids that they know that they're not alone, they've always been here. And we're a public school. This isn't based off of gender, race, or religion. We're here to learn and that includes history. So as much as people don't want to admit it, LGBTQ+ does have history and it can be something that can be taught in school and it can help a bunch of kids who feel like that they're alone when really they're not. And it would be nice to know, you know, you're not alone. And pretty much, it's always been- And pretty much, it's always been here. And we're human beings, at the end of the day, we should be accepted for who we are. And the only choice that I've made was not being bisexual. That wasn't my choice. But my choice was that I accepted who I am, and I accepted that I'm a part of this amazing community. And I hope that other kids can do that too.
Thank you.
Next up is Marina Izat, eighty-one West Fifteen Street. Valia Shaker, one-two-two-five Kennedy Boulevard.
Good evening. We understand and know that LGBT do exist, and they mingle between us as a human being, and we respect them, and we love them, and have them as friends too. But in the same time, they are not existed without curriculum being taught in schools. So, that never prevented anyone to choose their gender. We are not in a fight, and we must have winner or loser. But as a parent, we have the right to opt out our kids, and we have all the right to agree and accept what our kids will be taught at schools. Schools ask for parent permission before they give them candy, and now, they are denying parents' right to refuse LGBT curriculum. Also, we have to respect all different cultures and beliefs, that the same way you need us to accept your beliefs, and we do not teach religion in public schools. So we should not be teaching sexual orientation. And our belief is that God created us, males and females, from the minute we are born. All religion are against LGBT, but they are also encouraging to accept them and respect them as a human being. I'm against, by all my heart and mind, teaching LGBT curriculum to my kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maed Abdul Malik, five-eighty-three JFK Boulevard. No, how about Dr. Badwe, two-forty-one Broadway?
Hello, everyone. I just wanna start off by saying-
Please state your name for us.
Uh, Badwe.
Thank you.
So, like I was saying, I wanna start off by saying that we are all equal. We all live in a country where there provides freedom. We do not wanna force our children, and I wanna underline the word "force". We do not wanna force our children to learn something that is gonna affect them in the future. It's that they don't believe in. And we wanna give our children the best knowledge for them, to help them in the future, to become doctors, to become astronauts, to become anything that's gonna help the country and their family. Teaching the kids topics with sexuality is going to destroy them and destroy their mind. It's gonna take them to a path and a direction that we do not, as parents and as family, want them to go through. If we are not able to take a stand today and say no to this program, then I don't think that there is a meaning for this meeting at all today. We ask you to think about this and take it in consideration for our children and for the country, to help them. Because these are kids that don't know anything about sexuality at all, or the LGBT community. They only wanna be happy, they wanna smile, they wanna play, they wanna go to the playground and have fun, and not learn about something that it's not their age. And I just wanna say this from the bottom of my heart, from, for the LGBT community. Our homes are open. I know the schools have counselors that you guys can talk to. But bringing our children into this is not gonna help your life at all. It's gonna affect them and destroy them for our family and for everybody that loves them. Thank you.
Naveen Sinata, six-fifty Kennedy Boulevard. Would our student rep, Francis Labuti, still be here? I know. Francis, I, usually we let Francis go first, but his-
We're so sorry.
His card got mixed in, and I apologize for that, Francis.
We're so sorry, Francis.
Lunch on us, buddy, lunch on us.
All right? Mr. Munoz is paying.
Yeah, lunch on Chris.
Good evening, Board of Ed trustees, Superintendent Mr. Nice, Assistant Superintendent Mr. Copaz, and Dr. Degnan. My name is Francis Labuti, and as the Board of Ed representative for the student government, I hope to inform you on a number of events throughout the school the student government has hosted and participated in over the last month. Currently, the student government is working on planning the first annual spring fling dance. This event was recommended to us in our January General Assembly, where the student representatives had voted on having a spring dance. The date for the event will be Friday, April twenty-fourth. The event, just as our homecoming dance, is a semi-formal dance, and it will take place in the main gym. Additionally, we have, as we move closer to the end of this year, we have begin preparing materials for the election process for the 2020-2021 student government candidates. Again, thank you for your continued support of the student government and your time tonight.
Thank you, President. And our final speaker, Mr. Gene Woods, President of our BTA.
President of our union, it's never chilled the three minutes. He has the time he needs to speak. Thank you.
Tonight, I've listened to a number of things that were said, and I'm not gonna come from it from the emotional standpoint. I'm gonna come from it through what's happened throughout history and in the law. In the nineteen fifty's, Brown versus, nineteen fifty-four, Brown versus Board of Ed, schools were desegregated across the United States. And people decided that they were going to take their children out of those schools, 'cause they did not want them to attend schools with African-American students. Now, we think that's something that only existed in the South. But in nineteen seventies, when they tried a bus effort in Boston, parents became so outraged that they hurled rocks and busted windows on school buses, and pulled their kids from school. When we talk about removing our students from the classroom, about issues that are important for people to study across history, this is going to be a tremendous loss. In nineteen ninety-seven, uh, nineteen ninety-four, the New Jersey Commission on Holocaust Education was created, and it was mandated by Governor McGreevy at the time that we educate all of our students, and I quote, I'll pull this up right here. "Every Board of Education shall include instruction on the Holocaust and genocides in appropriate place in the curriculum of all elementary and secondary education schools for pupils." Then, in two thousand and two, the Amistad Commission, which is about educating all of our students about the contributions, historical, economic, and social, of all people of color. This legislation also created the Amistad Commission, a twenty-three-member body charged with ensuring the African-American history contributions and experiences are adequately taught in states' classrooms. These are pieces of legislation that were written in order to make sure that all of our students felt wanted, needed, and accepted. The fact that we end up in a situation where people do not wanna have their children educated about certain members of society will cause further problems for us. I wrote a piece a few weeks ago, and I shared it with some friends, and I titled, entitled it "Why". People want to say, "I wonder what I would have done during the Holocaust or during the Civil Rights Movement." What we are doing right now is what exactly you would have done then, and it would have continued. When you look at the curriculum, the curriculum is not about teaching sex. It is about teaching about the historical contributions of the members of society, who have always been taught, but students have never been able to see themselves in it. It's one of the reasons why many people don't turn to certain careers, because they've never seen themselves there. This is why this curriculum is important. This is why Governor Murphy instituted it. He listened to people across the state. He looked at the rates of suicide going on, and it was troublesome. And most of the teens who talked about why they felt like committing suicide was because they did not see themselves valued in school. We need to do a good job, and we are doing a good job at this, and I think we're going to do an even greater job when the curriculum gets fully implemented. Going back to the "why".
Again, he is our, he is the, he is the president of the Bayonne Teachers Union. He is not, he has unlimited time to speak. I'm sorry, that is our rules, that is our policy. Please continue, Mr. Wood.
It's okay, it's okay. When, when we go back to the "why", I leave it at this. We think about monsters in the world. And why do monsters exist? Because people allow them to exist. If we do not stand up and fight for the people in our communities who have not been allowed to be recognized in history, or in any other place in our world, we are failing our students tremendously. I will not let my students fail, and I will not fail them. That's my "why". I'm here for every single one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
That is it for our speakers this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I will make the motion.
Motion-
I would just like the parents to let you all know that while we listen to all your concerns, and we respect both points of view, this is a curriculum that is, as a Board of Education, the trustees that are here, our job is to make sure that the Bayonne School District incorporates the mandates from the State of New Jersey, the LGBTQ and Disabilities Curriculum. It is mandated by the State of New Jersey, and must be implemented by the Bayonne School District. We cannot let you opt, we cannot opt out, we cannot say we don't want it. It is a mandate, just like, just like we have financial literacy, just like we have our, what we have to do in science, in math, in history. This is a mandate given to us, that it must be taught. So, we are not taking a vote on whether we are teaching it or not teaching it. This is a mandate from the state. And the State of New Jersey, excuse me, I've let you all speak tonight. I have let you all speak tonight. And the State of New Jersey has mandated that this curriculum be implemented in all public school districts. Therefore, Bayonne Public School District must implement the curriculum for September twenty-twenty. Thank you.
Is there a-
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? Motion by Trustee Casillas, second. Second by Trustee Burke. On that motion, and second to adjourn, Trustee Alonzo. Trustee Broderick is absent, Trustee Burke, Trustee Casillas, Trustee Egan, Trustee Finerty, Trustee Wilbeck, Vice President Unit-
Yes.
President Pilato.
Yes.
It is ten-twelve. Trustees, I do need some resolution.